So I would like to call this workshop to order at one thirty-one. Our Commissioners Basin, David Arwood, Loy Slater, and Gules are present.
Madeline, you might bring the microphone a little closer to you.
Are there any changes to the agenda? That anyone else would like to have. I would like to make a change and put our guests first since we have a fairly dense agenda today. And so I would like to introduce Ara Andrea and Tiffany Westbrook. I've known Ara for eighteen years, I think.
Yep.
Came from Oregon to take the Forest Practices job. And while she was moving from Oregon to Idaho, my husband retired. And when she got here, they said, oh, we'll give you his job too. And I think she's been rolling with the punches ever since.
It's been a good roll.
They would like to talk to us about what's going on in Cooten County with fire mitigation.
Yep. I'll talk a little bit about what's going on statewide, but we'll focus then on North Idaho and Cooten County specifically. So as Madeline said, I'm Ara Andrea. I'm the Idaho Shared Stewardship Coordinator, working with Idaho Department of Lands. And what that means is that I work with two Forest Service foresters that are shared positions that sit in our office. One sits in our Corlaine office. Another from the Payette National Forest sits in our McCall office. And we orchestrate the cross-boundary fuel reduction work going on on forest lands all over the state. On federal lands, primarily utilizing our Good Neighbor Authority foresters. Those are IDL foresters who can use our more expedited contracting and forestry management processes on the national forests to get a lot more done, a lot more timber sold. As well as we work very closely with doing everything we can as a state agency to enhance and grow county wildfire mitigation programs in our areas. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that and then turn it over to Tiffany to talk about Cooten County specifically. Mouse is here. So for over five years, Idaho Shared Stewardship has been this all-hands, all-lands, inter-agency approach to actively managing forests across all ownerships. And we have focused primarily on building cross-boundary teams to plan and implement fire resiliency projects adjacent to scheduled like projects on the national forest. So that we can create this cross-boundary effective fuel break. Because it's only, it's only a fuel break that works if you've got all the ownerships together on consecutive acreage. And then we build these collaborative decision-making groups and do project development, design and to build and enhance local government. So we're not there to swoop in with our infrastructure funds and some other goodies, say, here's how you need to do it. We start with where they're at. In some of our counties, that's one part-time person that's in charge of wildfire mitigation as well as half a dozen other county tasks. So we have two shared stewardship priority landscapes that the state decided on or designated with the U.S. Forest Service. One in the north, one in the south, each about two million acres in size. Where we felt we could potentially move the needle on reducing these risks of catastrophic wildfire damage. So this is where we focus most of our inter-agency money and manpower to get the cross-boundary, cross-ownership projects done. And we focus it on projects, again, mostly county-based. And so those hash-marked areas are what we call focal areas, which are our cross-boundary project areas. So while shared stewardship cross-boundary projects primarily focus on work in and around the three national forests that you see encompassed by those red priority landscape boundaries. When it comes to the biggest tool in our toolbox to get cross-boundary work done, increasing the pace and scale of all active management on federal forest lands, that is our Idaho Department of Lands Good Neighbor Authority program. So through these, as I just talked about, through these IDL Good Neighbor, or we call it GNA, foresters were able to get a lot more work done, active management and fuels reduction treatments on the national forests, which kind of starts our whole cross-boundary efforts in most cases. So Good Neighbor Authority now has agreements with six of our seven national forests. And we are in negotiations with the SOTU National Forest to get that seventh one done. So with the recent President's Timber Expansion Executive Order and Governor Little, which had a subsequent EO to assist federal agencies to further increase forest management on and next to the national forests. And specifically in Governor Little's EO says, you will utilize all authorities and tools, specifically listing Good Neighbor Authority and Shared Stewardship. So we feel that we're at IDL, working with our county partners especially. We're really poised to take off on these fuel reduction projects on federal, state, and private forest lands. So, you know, what have we actually gotten done? Specifically, let's start with the federal forest lands. So since its beginning, Good Neighbor Authority sales have accounted between, or accounted for between eighteen to twenty-seven percent of the annual volume sold from national forests. That's four national forests that we sell timber on. The Panhandle, the Nez, Pierce Clearwater, the Payette National Forest, and the Boise National Forest. And totaled to, what is it, over two hundred million board feet through sixty Good Neighbor Authority that state-administered timber sales. Those sales have generated more than sixteen million dollars in receipts, which cover the costs of all of our staff working in the program and a wide range of other restoration work on the national forest. Closer to Cooten County in North Idaho, GNA timber sales and restoration work on just the Idaho Panhandle National Forest are adding up to some significant acreage, moving the needle on fire risk and improve forest health on this, our largest national forest. Over twenty-one hundred commercially harvested acres, another almost sixty-five hundred acres receiving fuel reduction treatments, either mechanically or prescribed burned. These timber sales on just the Panhandle harvested twenty-three million board feet that went to mills, generating over five million dollars in sales revenue. One thing to note about what we've done in our cross-boundary team since then is we now have in three southwest Idaho counties in our southern landscape, we have three counties that have direct Good Neighbor Authority agreements with two national forests down there, the Payette and the Boise. Up here, we just had two northern counties, Boundary and Latah, sign Good Neighbor Authority agreements with IDL Good Neighbor foresters. This will allow them to kind of come in through our existing agreements with the national forests, the Panhandle and the Nez Clear, to get that work done. And it allows money and manpower to go from the county to the national forest. And from the national forest, when they have funds, can be conveyed back to the county to do work on private lands. It's working really, really well. So what kind of cross-boundary fuel reduction work have we gotten done with our county partners on private forest lands? So for this presentation, just focusing on North Idaho, the shared stewardship fuel reduction work across all ownerships in the northern priority landscape, we have cross-boundary teams implementing work in four northern counties. Boundary, well, you can see in Boundary Bonner, as the team has shown. And they are all going to town right now. So just to give you an example, and some of these numbers, especially in the total harvested acres, are a little bit overestimated because that's the number of acres that come in on our Forest Practices notification. That means that's what they're planning on harvesting over the next couple of years. Most of the time, it's pretty accurate. But this just gives you an idea of the number of acres that are harvested, commercially thin, non-commercially, or pre-commercially thin, masticated, any kind of mechanical treatment to reduce fuels, as well as prescribed burn in all the counties. And you can see with our specific cross-boundary work with Boundary Bonner and Cooten County, with just our grants that are flowing through to these counties, we treated over a thousand acres last year. And that is all non-commercial, mechanically or hand-thin acres across private lands. So now I'm going to show you what it is we collectively do on the ground. Why this inter-agency cross-boundary effort makes a difference in reducing the risk of wildfire damage. So here's a before-treatment shot. Keep an eye on the pine in the background with all the trail markers on it. Here's a before-treatment shot of a high-risk forest right around here at the edge of a 2023 wildfire that threatened the community of Post Falls. That would be the Parkway Fire. And here's the after. So I had to do this, you know, back and forth. Look at the fuels, look at the ladder fuels. And if you could pan just to the left of this photograph, you would see the charred remains of the Parkway Fire. It is that close. And so we worked with the city of Post Falls to do this, and here's the after. You don't have to be a forester or fuel specialist to understand the next time a fire encroaches into this area, it's going to hit the ground. And it's going to probably stay on the ground if the winds are in check. So this is a mastication operation on the Post Falls Community Forest, resulted in pretty much all the removal of ladder fuels, pruning of all the lower limbs, plenty of space between the tree stems to keep an encroaching wildfire on the ground. Seeing as this is one of the projects right here in Cooten County, sponsored by the Fire Smart Program, I'm going to, this is a perfect segue, to just go into introducing Tiffany Westbrook. She's the Director of Cooten County Office of Emergency Management and Head of the Fire Smart Program, so.
Thank you. All right, so as Ara said, my name's Tiffany Westbrook. I'm the Director for Cooten County OEM. I've been with the department for eight years now. As Ara kind of talked about, the programs that they have at the state level, they're really the mechanism in which we're able to create meaningful work on the local level and get these dollars out into the community. So that partnership that we've been able to facilitate through the Shared Stewardship Program has been truly a huge, that avenue existed in a way that allows us to put more money on the ground in a more meaningful way. And so that partnership, I really feel like, has been strengthened since around 2020 is when we started working a lot closely. And you'll see as I talk through my presentation today, how we've been able to get more money on the ground more efficiently and effectively through these partnerships. So we've, since around 2000, that's when the Cooten County Fire Smart Program started, and we've had two decades of progress. Obviously, you can see that we've put a lot of money on the ground. Anyone have a guess about how much money that we've put on the ground since 2000? Anyone? Just over seven million dollars, so, I mean, six million dollars. So we've put over six million dollars of work done on the ground, and we've treated over seven thousand acres in Cooten County alone. A lot of the work in the past five years has been done at a level that we haven't seen before. And it's because we've been able to increase our pace and put money on the ground quicker because of the partnerships that we've had with the Shared Stewardship Program. So a little bit about the Fire Smart Program. This might be kind of small, but I'll talk to you about how we go about creating these projects, working with our partners, identifying areas, and getting the money on the ground. So the first thing that we do in Cooten County is we have a CWPP. For those of you who don't know, the CWPP is the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. That is integrated into the county's All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. That is a plan that the Department of Emergency Management takes on and creates. We're currently in the five-year update of the plan, and we have just submitted our CWPP for 2025 to review by Tyre Holfeltz with IDL as well. When we go about creating projects in that CWPP, we have an annual meeting where we meet with eleven fire jurisdictions in Cooten County, and we discuss the areas of concern within their jurisdictions. We then have meaningful conversations with them, and we bring our foresters into that conversation along with our partners on the Shared Stewardship Program to identify where we could potentially put the money on the ground quickly, efficiently, and in a way that makes the most meaningful fire break for our community in the area of the WUI. The WUI is the Wildland Urban Interface. And around ninety-five-plus percent of Cooten County is located in the WUI, which is why we are kind of able to get these funds because we can show that there is a great need because of the housing density that is located within the urban, within the Wildland Urban Interface. After we've identified a project in the CWPP, we then worked, put together that application through IDL, and we submit it. There is two types of applications that exist. We have the HFR programs, which have an adjacency requirement to the national, to the national forests, which obviously helps with the, having our partners, the Shared Stewardship, kind of help inform what projects they have going on in the national forests. But we also have our Western States Fire Management Grant that we can apply for up to two hundred and forty thousand dollars on a yearly basis. We really work with our partners, with the fire jurisdictions, to identify those projects. Then we put that application together. We submit that application, and if we're notified for funding, we get together and we have a kickoff meeting where we discuss the MOU deliverables. We look to see what communities might be willing to work with us. And we set our timeline and get started with our project managers. After we've had that discussion, the project manager then takes that work, and he begins implementing the treatment plan that we've discussed and has been agreed upon by all parties and is executed within the confines of that MOU that the county has signed on to. And then we work at project closeout. So these grants typically run us around a two-year turnaround from the time that we have been awarded the fund and the MOU has been executed to the time that we complete that treatment. But what we have been able to expedite through our partnership with Shared Stewardship is pre-identifying property owners and groups of lands that are interested, and we are able to have these conversations on the front end. So the moment that we have that money in hand, we're able to start doing the treatment on the ground. It's actually been amazing to see how quickly that's been expedited. So I kind of, and this is really small, I apologize for that. But I wanted to show you guys, this is also in our CWPP as well. But the image on the left-hand side is that WUI, the Wildland Urban Interface. So you can see all the orange area, that's kind of that intermix of housing population density and wildfire risk. Obviously, you see the red areas, that's highly, highly populated areas. But like I said, over ninety-five percent of the county is located in that WUI. So that is why we understand the risk of wildfire in our community is high, and we need to work to put mitigation funds on the ground to reduce that risk or at least allow the firefighters a fighting chance to minimize the fire spread. On the other side of the chart, you'll see that that is our Wildland Urban Interface-focused group members. So that consists of all the fire chiefs of Cooten County, as well as our partners with the Shared Stewardship and our project managers and our additional partners, IDL. So we really have worked really strongly through those partnerships to try to streamline this process as efficiently and effectively as possible. And I really think that the Post Falls project highlights that. It really highlights the fact that we had a wildfire come through the community. We saw the need for treatment. We were able to secure the funds, and we were able to do that in a very expedited timeframe of about eight months. So we had the meetings, got the money on the ground, and had the treatment completed. The first meeting we had was in November, and the treatment was completed by May. So this is just going to be a little bit of the success stories of the Cross Boundaries Group. As I mentioned, Post Falls Community Forest is one of the ones that I think is a full-circle moment because it illustrates that the fire risk exists, the wildfire occurred, and then we worked to reduce the risk for further incidences by treating that ground. And it was meaningful and visible to the community. But a couple other things that we've done collectively through the Shared Stewardship Program is we hosted, well, I'll show you the treatment for this on a later slide, but the Farragut Trail, some of you may be aware, there's a trail in Athol that kind of goes over to Farragut, and we were able, it's a community-traveled trail, and we were able to do treatment on that, but also utilize that specific treatment as a place to bring people to see what the treatment can look like because it's an open place, and they can walk through it and see how meaningful this work is. We also worked together to conduct our first-ever Living in Wildfire Country Community event. That was an event that we held up in Athol this year because we have a grant, the Northern Timber Grant, that we're going to be kicking off in the coming year. And we wanted to have an opportunity to provide the community with information on wildfire response, mitigation efforts, alerts and warnings, anything to really do with wildfire and allow them to enter and have the conversations with the community and be informed about the risk on the landscape. Because in 2023, again, we also had the Ridge Creek Fire, which was very visible on the front country, and it sparked a lot of community interest, so we wanted to capitalize on that. And like I said, the Northern Timber Application that has been funded, that is for the greater Athol area, that is about a two hundred and forty thousand dollar project. And we're going to be working with our pre-identified property owner locations to carry out that grant. We also worked with Cross Boundaries to develop our Hauser Lake application, and that was in the Hauser area. It was three communities in partnership with Hauser Fire Department and Northern Lakes Fire Department as well. And so an important piece of this puzzle is the landowners. They're really the ones to allow us to come onto their properties and do this work and have those discussions. So they are one of the most important stakeholders in all of this. And I would say that the partnerships through Shared Stewardship and the foresters at IDL and our project manager through our projects that we implement, they are really great at going out and meeting with these property owners, having the discussion of the risk, kind of talking them through what the treatment could look like, getting their buy-in. But also, any treatment we do also has an agreement by the property owner that they will maintain the land for ten years. And so they talk about what that kind of looks like. And so we also express the importance of personal responsibility. Obviously, it's a great and wonderful thing that we're able to come out here and help fund the treatment on your land through these dollars at no cost to the landowner, but also that understanding that they'll maintain this work and that they, that they see the value in what we're doing to maintain their properties and help keep the community safe. So our foresters and our project managers explain the fuel breaks to them. And then also, they work to connect the landowners to resources. So sometimes, our forester may meet with the landowner and identify that they're not a good fit for the project through Cooten County Fire Smart, but there may be other avenues through IDL that they can get funding through the equip programs or NRCS. And so those are all discussions that they have as well. It's not, hey, nice to meet you, oh, you need treatment, sorry, there's nothing we can do for you. It's more of, hey, nice to meet you, we understand your situation. This program might not be a good fit, but here are some additional resources to help orient you and hopefully get you the treatment on your land that you need. So like I said, another program highlight in addition to the pictures that Ara showed from Post Falls, this is the Farragut Trail. So you can obviously see the before-treatment and after-treatment and how much of a visible difference that you can see on the landscape. And just clearing up that underbrush and shrubbery that feeds those ladder fuels. So it's really important that we do this work and that we educate the community. And Farragut Trail was one of those examples of it being a county-owned piece of property that we were able to get in there quickly and do the work quickly. And it also was probably a turnaround of about six to eight months. And that, again, was only able to come to fruition because of the partnerships that we've established with the Shared Stewardship Program and the Cross Boundaries Group. So like I said, we also do a lot of community outreach. You can see on there that red line, that's the thirty-seven point five acres that was treated on the Farragut Trail fuel break. But we also send out letters to the community, to the property owners around the area, to inform them, this is the work we're doing, you're going to see treatment going on in the area, this is why we're doing it. This is how you can be involved, who you can contact. And then obviously, we do conduct community meetings. Farragut, Post Falls Community Forest, we probably had like fifty to sixty people show up to that meeting in the middle of a snowstorm in February. And it was really cool to see that the community really cares about this work, and the work we're doing is really meaningful. So we definitely do our best to educate and inform and provide resources and avenues because we all truly care about reducing that wildfire risk on our communities. Because we've all seen what the devastation can occur if we don't do anything. And then, so just to kind of close out today, I just wanted to show you some of the projects that we have in the Pike. And a lot of these are, as I mentioned, because of the partnerships we have with Shared Stewardship and Cross Boundaries. So currently, we are working on Canfield Mountain. We had some priority areas already addressed, but there's more work to be done. There's about two hundred and forty thousand dollars that's going to be conducted on Canfield. We have additional work that some of you may be frequenters of Tubbs Hill, but they were doing a lot of that work, they've been doing a lot of that work this summer. And that has been really meaningful and highly visible to the community. And sometimes, it creates opportunities too where people are frustrated and don't understand why we're ruining nature or doing these things. And it also provides an avenue for that conversation of, we love these areas too, and in order to keep them beautiful, we have to maintain them and take care of them. As I mentioned, we have an upcoming project, the Northern Timber Project, that is in the greater Athol area. That was really a conversation about the results of, again, that 2023 wildfire season, seeing the interest of the community up in Athol and also the Ridge Creek Fire. So it kind of created that momentum we needed to put together a meaningful application. We just heard yesterday, and we're really excited about this because it's one of the largest grants that we've ever been awarded, a half a million dollar landowners assistant grant that we're going to be executing the MOU on shortly. And that will be in the priority areas of Wolf Lodge, Cataldo, and the greater Harrison area. So it's really cool that we were able to get selected for that project, and we're going to be able to put that money on the ground in a meaningful way. And then another one that we've been in partnership and conversations with is the Highway Ninety-five Corridor Joint Chiefs Project. There's been some hang-ups and hiccups with the changes at the federal level. But that is one that hopefully we'll be able to continue to do the treatment along the Ninety-five Corridor, and they're also doing treatments along the I-90 corridor as well. So that's the Cooten County Fire Smart Program. Like I said, we, when I started, we were probably running one, one grant application a year, and we have really significantly moved that up to a minimum of three at all times. And it's really great to see that there is a desire, there is a need, and we are working with our partners to put that money on the ground and be able to show to the community that we understand the risks here, and we're doing what we can to hopefully mitigate and reduce the tragedy that could transpire if we don't do anything. So at that time, I think that's all I have.
Yep.
If there's any questions, we'll definitely stand for questions.
Well, just two things, please, excuse me. I spent thirty-one years in the foresters. I worked on the Corlaine, St. Joe, the Boise, the Pennington, and the regional officer, regional fore, before transferring to Washington, D.C. So I know the whole state of Idaho. Just, just for comment, I sold a timber sale in Emerald Creek on the St. Joe in nineteen seventy-four, twenty-five million board feet in one timber sale. Times really, and the lowest volumes of those sales down there was eight or ten million feet. So things that, you know, it's, the other thing is, I have heavily timbered land in the Ninety-five Corridor, and I've been working on it for years. Well, since March, I spent six months thinning the ladder fuels. And I, and that's where I was this morning for four hours. Been in the ladder fuels and I, and that's where I was this morning for four hours, and I'm eighty years old. And I got flash piles up the gauze and I was just wondering. And then, of course, I got neighbors that don't seem to care or understand, you know, and they moved into. So how, how can, how can a person like me who's who's really trying to effectively reduce ladder fuels and stuff? Get some help maybe when I'm old man and everything, and the other thing is, is how do we get the the neighbors that I have around me? That have the same kind of land with ladder fuels and are just not, in fact, some of them are burning grass along the fence line with a torch during fire season.
Yeah.
Put a stop to that, so I, that's just those questions.
Well, those are challenges that we, you're not the first one, and I think one of the things that we really try to do. Is encourage um the conversation to take place and offer, offer opportunities to do community meetings, so in the past, in specific fire jurisdictions. A fire chief might say, hey, I wanna do an uh workshop or a host an event where we can invite this specific community to come and be informed. We have done so many of those meetings on the backside of Hayden Lake, cuz that's one of the areas. That consistently is brought to our attention of a concern, because if any of you have been on the backside of Hayden Lake, you know it's one-way in, kind of one-way-out situation. So we've hosted a lot of opportunities, so if there is a desire for that, I would encourage you to reach out to us and we can hopefully help facilitate that. But I think part of that too is, if you live in an area where an existing grant happens, we are more than willing to talk to you and see if your property could fall within to a project area. If it doesn't though, I think that's when we kinda pass them over um to IDL and some of their other.
See, my my place might be just far enough away from ninety-five.
To be out of the priority landscape. I always tell people, the first uh contact I make uh to get yourself uh some assistance. Is the IDL Private Forestry Specialist, which you'll find in the Saint Mary's Office.
Oh, in the yard.
Yes, and the Private Forestry Specialist can get you on the right track to try to figure out, you know. In our, are you a good fit for NRCS equip, are um, and just because you're outside of the priority landscape. Doesn't mean that we won't come in with our uh cross-boundary team resources and help you. We are helping Latah County right now really go to town.
Yeah, yeah, I know Latah County real well.
With um with their cross-boundary work and their fuels mitigation, just been meeting with the county commissioners recently. Yes.
Yeah.
You know, one tree coastal house, five thousand dollars.
If you go that arborist route, yes, that's very expensive.
Another thing is too, the fire chiefs, a lot of the fire chiefs in the fire jurisdictions will come out and do free property assessments. So they'll give you ideas on what you could do to create that defensible space directly around your home and then maybe a little bit further out.
My my thing now is I'm just starting to wear out.
Yeah, but for your neighbors, that might be something.
Yeah, but the neighbors, they're just, they don't understand.
And getting them informed.
We have a lot of programs, we do a lot of signage, both Post Falls Community Forest and the Farragut Recreational Trail has got signs all along.
I don't wanna take anymore, I just, it just, it's real personal right now, cuz I just came in from.
We hear this.
Removing ladder fuels this morning, yeah, okay.
When when you're hiring these people to do this, are they, are they all local? Or are they from out of state? Are we hiring locally?
For us, I mean, you can speak to some of the sales and stuff, but for us, uh we have a competitive bid process, so if the project's over a certain amount of money, we have to do. A whole bid process and then we select the lowest, best value, lowest dollar amount and most. I I wanna, I can't think of a time where they haven't been in the area, to be honest.
I can't, and of course, if it's a commercial sale on the National Forest, the mills are fairly local, I'd say Vaughn Brothers would be the furthest.
Yeah, like Next Gen Logging, they're a local, they've done a lot of our stuff.
They do a lot.
There, yeah, uh Idaho Land Works, there's a lot of local ones that.
I was just curious.
Do you um ever use volunteers or is it just too dangerous work?
We allow the landowners to put in for some in-kind kind of match work sometimes when we're working with the landowners. But yeah, with with the liability, so our agreements with landowners have to include that.
Do you have specific buyers of the lumber uh that you you always go to?
So on, so on private grounds that we do through the Fire Smart Program. Those grant funds specifically are for non-commercial fuel reduction work. But for the work that we administer, IDL administers on the National Forest, when the timber sale is auctioned off. It's just like any state timber sale, so a mill has to buy it, there's a purchaser.
Okay, so you don't have like, you call up, hey, Harry, I have a so much, do you want it kinda thing?
Well, we can do direct sales up to a very small amount of volume coming off, but for the most part, no, those. Those um sa- timber sales are auctioned and highest bidder, highest bidding mill gets it.
And then if it's private land, um do you share the monies or? Uh like if you're cutting down.
Oh, you mean like make the landowner provide match?
Right, right, or how?
We tend to not do timber sales on private land through the Fire Smart Program, because not, we cannot make a profit and any money. Has to go directly back into treatment, so it becomes really complicated, we've only sold once recently and that was on Veterans Centennial and. We were able to sell about eight grand, but then like, we had to put that directly back into, you cannot profit at all.
Uh huh, well, bravo you, I mean, it's, it's beautiful and you, you do it. From the pictures I've seen, it it's beautifully done, it's not like it's hacked or overdone, it's just lovely.
Our project manager and forester does a phenomenal job of trying to keep it as natural as possible and really. Make it meaningful, but also be aware of it, we still want it to be beautiful.
Right, yeah, well done, well done, and then lastly, the word mastication, I've always associated that with chewing. How does that, is it sort of the same thing where you chew up the round cover?
That one picture, where's the one picture?
Almost there.
There it is.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it chews up smaller diameter and spits it out in a, in a non-threatening, low-laying fuel. Bed of chips.
Part of the challenge that we face too is depending on like the slope of the land, obviously, the price per acre can go up substantially, so there's a lot of land like on the backside of Hayden. We can't do with things like that, cuz it's just too steep and that requires a lot of hand treatment, but um regardless, they do a really good job at treating the land and making it look wonderful.
Yeah, see, my problem now, of course, because I'm doing it by hand and I don't have the equipment, you ought to see the slash piles I've got, and I'm gonna. Some sometime around Thanksgiving, I'm gonna have to get together with the fire guy and IDL and we're gonna, I'm gonna have to burn all that stuff. Cuz there's no way else for me to get rid of it, and it's all the way from little stuff and I got, you know, I'm cutting down all the little trees too, of course, you know, so. But this is, this works real well.
Yeah, very fast.
Well done, well done, guys.
So I I have some questions too, Victoria was asking about shared revenue, I think. But is the landowner then expected to share an expense, is it a split?
It depends on who you're going through, most of our conveyance of grant monies through the Fire Smart Program, no. Occasionally, there's a grant that comes through that requires the landowner to do maybe a ten percent in-kind. And you can document that a lot of ways, any of the work that you've done yourself. Most of the time, no, but if you go to NRCS, Natural Resources Conservation Service, to enroll in their equip. Program to help, they only do fifty, maybe seventy-five if you've got an exceptional project, but just a fifty percent. So you give the NRCS the bills and they will reimburse you fifty percent. Yes, so it is a fifty-fifty match with NRCS generally, normally.
Um and I do have some others, um do you ever? I don't know how long you've been doing this, but do you ever experience unintended consequences on like uh wildlife or anything? Changing the habitat to the extent that wildlife are adversely affected?
They do their best to create like areas that are still able for the wildlife to go through and like. Get in the shrubbery and climb up the tree and stuff, like they really, I can't remember the term for it, I don't know if you can, but it's like they create these islands in specific spots. That become like wildlife refuge type areas, and so it's still natural, it's not all bare, they have areas to hide and stuff, but it still slows down. The ladder fuels and creates a fire break still.
And I think somebody says something about the landowner having to agree not to sell the property.
Not to sell, it's just there's an agreement to maintain, so you can transfer the property still, you can still sell the property. Um but they do sign an agreement saying that they would maintain the property.
Maintain it in its fire preventive state.
Yeah, it's very loosely worded, there's no like conditions of this is how you will maintain it, um but it's just an agreement that they would maintain it.
An honor system.
Pretty much, and it's hard, we've had situations where that isn't very enforceable.
That's one of the other problems I've had, you know, I've been out there now twenty-some years and I thinned it a couple times, guess what? The stuff comes back.
Oh, yeah.
This brush especially.
That's why the work hasn't stopped.
The limbing on the trees is okay, but boy, that brush comes back, this is the third time I've cut that brush.
We have all different versions of that.
And that's, that's one of the challenges we see too, when we go in with a Fire Smart Grant, we can't go back in with another Fire Smart Grant for the same type of treatment, so. The only way we could go back to the same area with a specific grant is if we were saying doing phase two of a phase one, it cannot be the same type of treatment twice. Um and I think that's just to make sure that the money's not just going to the same spot over and over and over again. Um but it does make it a challenge, because there are areas that were treated in two thousand and we're like, oh man, it would be nice if we could recircle back, but that's just some of the confines.
I was thinking about spraying all the rip rock, well done.
Could be a, be an EPA issue.
I won't go any further with that.
All this sort of anticipates, question of comment, I have, um, so I used Fire Smart years ago, so it's been a go. You know, like five early guys came in and they just totally cleared out the city, it was a mess, it was full of brush, really the kind of brush that. Takes off and gets some mechanics, it's about five foot tall, and so every year I spend about a week to clear that area and follow it up. Uh and I'm wondering, have you monitored how well people have followed up, cuz you're putting a lot of taxpayer dollars on the ground there. And as you're indicating, it kinda goes to waste if a year or two later, the brush comes back. And and that was one question I had, and if that is an issue, the question to follow up would be. What if anything can you do to encourage follow-up by landowner, I mean, like with old funds until they get inspected today, next year or something, I I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, I was impressed by the amount of work and effort that went in, cuz it was an area that, yeah, I feel like I had a pretty tough guy, but man, it would have taken a lot for me to clear that. And these guys came in with their equipment and just cleared it out, and so I would just stay on that, because I don't want it to get back.
Well, and I think that 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 is a challenge and it has happened, I'm not gonna say it hasn't, and I think. Where we try to push is that personal responsibility and that education piece up front. At the end of the day, we have had instances where maybe a neighbor's land got treated and a neighbor was frustrated cuz they're not maintaining that land, but as the county. That becomes a legal issue and it's not really something that we um have much teeth to enforce, because the money's already been expended, the treatment's already occurred. Um and there's really not really any uh avenue for us to pursue to enforce unfortunately, so I think. Understanding that and being down that road before, we are a lot more like kind of, not stringent, but just like. Putting all the information out there, really trying to get that landowner to understand the type of work, the money that's going in on the ground. And why it is meaningful and important for them to maintain it, uh I would hope any person who understands that they're getting. A fair bit of treatment on their land and understands the value because of that, would really wanna make sure that they keep it manageable and maintained, so it doesn't get to a point where they can't. Um but unfortunately, that is a sticking point and we've, we've had this discussion at length of what more could we do? Um but there's not a great avenue for us to pursue.
Yeah, it's quote, roll, reg, and trust, and verify, I mean, you have an agreement with the landowner, this loose agreement, it really has no teeth to it. It seems to me you could put something in there that withhold some funds until they do it, or they let the pass, you know, the test like, you know, inspection next year. Or some way to to maybe the economic, so I look at the economics of it. If if you put all this money in and within two years it's back to what it was, it's really, it seems to me it's economically not efficient. It's a taxpayer money, but it might, there might be a balance or we have some follow-up if we make it economic to to make sure.
Yeah, my experience is it's not two years, you're looking at seven to ten when I get, it's it's seven to ten when the the brush comes back, but just. Between you and me, I've got a pruning chainsaw, you know, a big long handled thing with a little motor, I got an attachment for it. That's, that's a hedge trimmer attachment, and I walk through my woods now when the stuff is real small. And I, and I just go, and I knock it all down every two years or so when it's real soft, still and not big. And that'll keep it down and you won't have to worry about.
Do that, you don't have to spray, I mean, you can go in and, yeah, broadleaf spray and kill stuff, and I know some people don't like that, it gives you that. Uh there's a number of ways you can stay on it, but the key is stay on.
Yeah, and we would like to have enough people to go out and do inspections and monitor. But yeah, Tiffany's right, generally speaking, do we find out? Yes, whether they have or haven't, why? Because a neighbor tattles or they come back and say, I just bought this property and it's a mess.
Somebody inherited it.
And then we look it up and sure enough, they.
We are able to have a little bit more teeth when we look at doing projects with our city partners, so for example, with the Post Falls Project. We're very, very on it with the forestry departments at Post Falls or City of Court Lane and we. Explain to them that they have trails teams and they have people to go out there and maintain these places, and they do do a really good job of doing that, but. To your point, yes, it is a problem and it is something that I wish we could maybe have a little bit more teeth on, but unfortunately.
Problem is, there's no pride in ownership.
And that's why we really preach the personal responsibility, I I think everybody would love something for free. But at the end of the day, it is your property and you have a responsibility to maintain it, and this is a great tool and a great way to be able to get a head start. But you still have the responsibility to maintain your property.
How uh my next one sustained is it through the sales of the wood? Is it like fifty percent or is it, what's the, like, cuz he was mentioning, you know, tax dollars and making good use of our tax dollars. How did, what's the business model look like there?
Well, with the um Good Neighbor Authority, with the state administered timber sales on National Forests. Those revenues from the timber sale come back to our IDL program. However, they're, they're kept in a bucket that specifically is spent on the National Forest or for direct. Charges associated with IDL staff and 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 services. So there's that business model and that is self-sustaining, so we can pretty much. We do have some state general funds going into our GNA program, but um for the most part, it is self-sustaining. Program off of the timber sale revenues, so on the private land side. That is all federal grant coming from the USD, US Department of Agriculture. Either NRCS or Forest Service grants.
Yeah, the whole idea of the timber sale program is to generate enough revenue to do the work. And not use any taxpayer, see, but but now with the private, private lands, a whole lot different, but that was the whole idea, the whole process set up. Fifty, sixty years ago was to generate enough, in fact, in the old days, we generated so much revenue, the Forest Service was the only income. Producing agency in the US government, oh yeah, they actually produced income.
And there's, and there's other, counties have other, well, normally, they have other avenues of federal funds like Title III funds. That come with their Title II funds through Secure Rural Schools and you may all know, Secure Rural Schools has not been authorized since it was. Uh expired in twenty twenty-three, but we have really high hopes of it happening again. So that enables counties to get some of the monies off of the National Forest back into the counties for roads, for schools. And Title III funds come back for fire mitigation work.
I was gonna ask you that question, because in the old days, you know, we'd generate enough revenue on the timber sales and then, and then they were used for roads and schools in the state. From which the sale was sold, and with this new program, I was wondering if you're get, if if the schools and the, and the, and the roads programs are still getting some of the funds off the National Forest in that way.
Not right now, because Congress hasn't reauthorized.
They got it all screwed up.
But let's suppose it does happen like we're all hopeful for this, this go-around, this year. Um what we do, because every county's different and it's really up to the discretion to a certain amount. How much Title III funds or Title II funds, how much in Title III funds, how much, if any, coordinators. We work with each of our seven counties that we work most closely with, including Goodney. With those county commissioners and those OEM offices to say, how are you doing this, how are, and we, we are proponents of. Taking more Title III.
So it's, for example, in Cootney County, unfortunately, we don't utilize any Title III for wildfire mitigation, it's just not been the way the commission has utilized those funds. But for example, in Bonner County, they use a fair chunk of Title III funds, but they also have a larger percentage of the National Forest that they.
Yeah.
They generate more, um but we just don't in Cootney County, um we operate uh these programs. I have a grants administrator in my office and uh we operate this on the back of emergency management, because wildfire mitigation. because wildfire mitigation is tied to emergency management. And so we leverage some of our emergency management performance grant dollars for the administrative cost of this.
Yeah, I know we need to move along. Um, but I wanna, I have a couple more questions. One is for the private owners, there uh minimum acreage? Required, I mean.
We typically like parcels of five acres or three to five acres typically. But it's more so the meaningful fuel break and not the individual property owner. In the early two thousands, it used to be a shotgun approach where they would just treat a couple acres here and it help, and it really didn't make a meaningful difference. So now it's more of a group of property owners that we can get together and treat and make that fuel reduction work. Makes sense.
Makes sense.
And then my other question is, um, what criteria are used when you determine which areas to focus on? And one of your bullet points said Harrison and Cataldo, I think. And for a guy from Post Falls, I'm wondering, what's the deal with that?
We have a myriad of of modeling outcomes that the Forest Service has done. The State of Idaho's done, other groups have done to show where are the most at-risk areas of of suffering of wildfire damage. And that's.
And then on that too, I mentioned the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. We meet with those fire chiefs and we have that discussion on an annual basis. In conjunction with the modeling that exists, we get the anecdotal evidence of like what areas actually could use treatment and that helps us. But some of these grants require specific criteria. So the Landowners Assistance Grants has um a socioeconomic aspect to it. So we needed a focus on some of those communities like a Cataldo, for example. So that allowed us um to treat those areas. The HFR grants, like I mentioned, have that adjacency requirement. So the areas we treat have to be within a mile. A mile and a half of the federal forest. And then the Western States Management, that is one where we're able to kind of go anywhere, but we still have a match requirement to that grant. And because we have a match requirement to that grant, we only really wanna go in areas that can help us meet that match requirement.
So I'm passing out some twenty twenty-four progress reports. So these still have a lot of exciting updates that have happened since December of twenty twenty-four, but. Oh, you passed.
What happened?
Oh, yeah.
You didn't take one?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two different.
We needed some back? Is that what you're saying?
No, I I felt like put four down there.
There's extra right here.
There we go, and. Yeah, those are all. No, that that goes down. This is for you.
Well, thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate the invitation and if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to either IDL or the Cooten County Fire Smart Program and help make sure you get to where you need to be.
Something you might think about and we could bring back the commission for discussion. Cooten County's never had a fire safe program for new construction on new single-family homes. That's not uncommon in other parts of the country.
We've we've had those discussions too, for sure, but part of that comes down to the conversation of whose responsibility is that?
Well, the way I, for twelve years in Colorado, it was the homeowners.
Yeah.
And you didn't get a building permit unless you did.
That makes sense.
But, you know, that's a political issue.
It's a huge political issue.
Have a conversation and see, you know, here are the trade-offs. It'd be nice if you guys could have asked to come back.
Well, you know, Dave and our our planning for uh we got that hazard section, you know, it's fire, lands, landslide.
So we should rope it in then.
I'd love to discuss that too from the sense of the county's all hazard mitigation plan and making sure those plans speak to each other.
And and getting that communication from the all hazard plan and the Community Wildfire Protection Plan into planning and zoning, it's it's a big goal with some of our most
Well, you'll be glad to know.
Communities across the across the state.
We still have money in the twenty twenty-six budget for the continued comp plan update.
One O?
So we ought to be able to make it happen.
We're doing our all hazard mitigation plan in-house without a contractor, so it's been it's been fun.
I understand. Thank you for being.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So back to.
Give me just a moment.
Yeah, it's pretty dry out there.
Are you gonna make an announcement or?
Move over there.
This approval of the public hearing minutes from June twentieth.
Still not. False six.
Was it twenty-six?
Oh, twenty-six.
It says twenty-six, but it's from here.
Twenty-six, June twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
I move to approve the June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five public hearing minutes.
All the leaders?
Hi.
Close?
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, everyone. And Aaron Claus is called in by telephone because he's had transportation issues. And we're not doing Zoom anymore. Um, but he's able to watch all this on YouTube, which is a little bit delayed, and he's on the phone. So he can jump in in just a moment if you'd like. But I, first of all, the good news for this and everything else on the agenda is I only need five to ten minutes for each item. So these should go fairly quickly. On the uh comp plan data update, the reason I asked to put this on the agenda is Aaron and through uh working diligently with my staff, SCJ has finished the community profile update, which is all the data of the conference plan. And it is ready to be considered for adoption into the plan. Because our plan has been adopted by resolution by the county commissioners, it needs to go through a public hearing process for us to update this new data. So that's really the principal reason this is on here. You've seen the data before. Aaron can jump in in a moment and tell me if he wants to me to scroll through anything on the newest version. But really, the short version is that um we just need to put, schedule this when you're ready for a public hearing. And again, I'll send this to you again if you'd like, so you can go through it one more time. But it it really is just replacing the old data with this new data. And then on- once you recommend and the county commissioners agree, we will do that electronically, online and with all our hard copies. And that's allows us to then go forward with continued conference of plan update work, which will be policy matters. And to me, that's where there's real magic is because we can take the data, extrapolate what it means, what it's telling us and how it should shift our policies in ways that are more helpful, more efficient and more conducive to aspirations of the county's residents. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Aaron, do you wanna jump in and add anything?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can I? You can?
Yes.
It's funny watching you on the screen. That was a really good presentation and um uh I made some notes here about, you know, some potential. Um, eh, not not that I wanna, you know, draw out the uh profile too much longer, but there might be a couple of things we could add based on that presentation and just uh see if we can vet with them with the, you know, the wildfire risk match, for example, and the recent efforts uh that have been included, which I'd be happy to add in and maybe vet through them. But um, yeah, no, I don't really have anything to add. I I think you have a pretty robust profile, a good foundation for uh considering uh policy recommendations and informing our community engagement efforts. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions or any areas where you think uh still might need some more tweaks or or work if you've had a chance to to review it. And I'm sorry I couldn't be there today, uh if you can still hear me. A belt started to melt in my car on the way.
I'm sorry you had that trouble, Erin.
I'm just glad I made it back.
Yeah, what a nightmare. Not that I know of. Um, I mean, there's significant differences from the old data to the new data.
New data.
But not since you've last been over this. I think that Aaron can jump in there. He's found some better data for federal and state land, the acreages, I mean. Um, so it's more precise.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the one gap we had and I I didn't have that last Friday, but I I have it now and it's it's really just a percentage and acreage breakdown based on the size of uh parcels and GIF and um a revised analysis for uh public owned lands, uh which not only includes uh, you know, federal and state lands, but also jurisdictional lands, cities and the county. And also uh uh service districts.
I went through, I didn't hardly, there's just a few little red lines every once in a while, you know, except that one section back here under social vulnerability indexes, there's quite a little bit of change there.
I don't know if it would be applicable for this, but um has there been an actual or recent study on the aquifer and the amount of the flow? The last one I looked for was two thousand and seven, when they did some type of testing. And that's, you know, there's been a lot of change since two thousand and seven.
Not to my knowledge and along those lines, there's no study and no even PhD staff says there's no understanding of what effect the continued growth of the cities will have. Because at the rate we are growing, before I am dead, it'll be city to city, rooftop to rooftop, all across the Prairie, Rathrum Prairie Aquifer.
We've had, we've had little maps, you know, cause I managed.
Right.
You know, and I can't remember what the data is. But it, but the, but the, the idea of you see, and like you say, I mean, we're counting cities, the cities.
Are growing unrestrained. E- even though there's an argument that water and sewer through the city is safer over the aquifer, just having the density that cities have, which is tenfold over what a county has.
Correct.
Uh, you know from your own experience in this urban area, people dump anything in their backyard.
Yep.
And over an aquifer, to me, that's kinda worried.
Well, I I saw something in the paper today or yesterday that point one three acres is gonna have ten apartments on it.
Right downtown Corta Lane, Third and Wallace.
Uh, yeah, it's Third and Wallace. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But not only that, Post Falls is already on water restriction, but yet they keep giving out building permits.
So one of the things I'd like to raise as a policy question through the comp plan is how do we think about that into the future? What do we do?
Right, he's hoping.
Yeah.
How how do we as a county get the cities to work together with everybody and try and protect the effort or something?
Well, one of the things I hope to do with this comp plan update is have city staff working with us.
Well, and I'm actually working with Madeline and with multiple city council members from the county and other people to actually do an aquifer summit. So that's in the works and trying to be representatives from every entity within the county. So we can all work together on that because we don't operate in a bubble. And we need to all be mindful of what we're doing, how we're doing and how it affects everybody else. So there's something in process in order to try to do that.
The problem with it is, it's just like Rathrum, what was it, two months ago or whatever, the they rejected the one
Big huge.
Big subdivision up there. And then they turned the ride around and get it because
Yeah.
Well, somebody could sue us. Somebody could sue somebody, anybody for anything. I mean, and I understand that. But what good is it gonna do if we don't do something? Because all they are doing, I mean, I'm four miles from that and it's just it's just subdivision after subdivision after subdivision. They said, well, the farmers are using all the waters. Well, the farmers have been using that much water forever. And they're not using near as much as they were back then when they, um.
Yeah, I I think this is a big concern for the whole community. You you hear it a lot. So I've been chomping at the bit as far as the aquifer to talk about that, but my understanding was this has to kinda be in place so that we can begin to talk about those things.
Of course, it doesn't have to be, but it's just good process.
Okay, well. Yeah.
We've got this ready to go. I'd like to be done with it.
And move on, yeah.
Who would do that water study that uh that was done in two thousand and seven? And I need to go back to figure like that.
Should be references in that um booklet that PhD publishes over the Rathrum Prairie Aquifer.
You know, there's, there's been talk, you know, I I lived in the Boise Valley and I lived here and 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 when I was a young man, I I worked in the fields here, in the grass fields. And we had huge, massive pumps, two hundred fifty horsepower pumps, you know, they weren't submersibles then. Irrigating all that bluegrass, thousands and thousands of acres of it, but we didn't start irrigating until about the end of April. And we stopped in October. So there wasn't any water use at all, you know, for the farming during the winter months. But I don't know if anybody's ever done a comparison, how many billions of gallons did the farmers pump for their bluegrass, you know, for forty, fifty years versus what we're pumping now, you know, so.
But to answer your question is presumably IDL or some state agency would hire consultants.
And I'll go back and look at the documentation and I was.
You would think so. John, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I just, I don't want us to get off track. I mean, we're here to listen to what Aaron has to say and develop uh the the statistics and the data, right? And we're getting off on uh how much growth there is and how much, I mean, the statistics should be projecting how much growth there is gonna be. That's important. Important and and the question about water is important, but I don't wanna get off on
Yeah.
On a, on a tangent that's not pertinent to this meeting while we got Aaron on the phone.
Eric, thank you. Anything else? Aaron, any last thoughts?
No, not for me. Um, uh, a- as long as the commission is comfortable with the sufficiency of of where we're at today. Um, uh, I I would um be happy to go forward with this and make any tweaks as needed. Uh, there's a couple of minor things that I I will, I can submit to you, David, but if everyone feels that uh everything else is uh looking um is ready for consideration. Um, and uh we're ready and ready to move forward.
Okay, well, we'll just schedule a meeting or hearing, I mean, and I'll work with you to make sure it works in your calendar, Aaron. And we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you for being.
Very good. Yeah, thank you all and I'm I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person.
These things happen.
Okay, have a great day.
Thank you. Cell tower code amendment. Uh, let me please give you a little background in this and then I think it'll start to make sense. While we have regulations in the land use code dealing with cell towers and we have since the first zoning regulation in seventy-three, these things evolve and need to evolve over time. Our regulations are not current as they could be. And I say it that way because the commissioners turned down two cell towers here recently. We got sued. We've lost in one case. We got sued, we've lost in one case, it's pretty certain we're going to lose in the other. And partly because our regulations are not contemporary. And so Pat Braden, our legal counsel, has already worked up a draft proposal, and he's compared it against the other cities, and that's what you saw in your packet, was the other cities' regulations. And he's modeled hours after theirs, so we would A, be consistent, and any cell tower provider could work with the cities or us, and it'd be easy for them. But also because what you see that the cities have done is contemporary, and while there is, there is no set of regulations that give any municipality an ironclad ability to deny these things, and I'll circle back and explain why in just a moment, but at least we can be more contemporary and have a better ability to say no when it's appropriate. One of the things that makes it difficult with cell towers, and for municipalities, either county or city, to deny them, is the nineteen ninety-six telecommun- telecommunications act, which is federal law, and which demands that municipalities approve these things somewhere. You can't, you can't say absolutely no. You can say no, but the no has to also allow it somewhere else. So you could say no to a particular location for a rational justification, but you can't say no across the board throughout, in our case, the county. And when you do say no against one particular application, you have to have a really good reason as to why, and it has to work with the consultants, the, um, cell tower consultants that put together the data to justify these things, and explain why their data is wrong, and you see where this is going.
Well, what's the steps toward the right to do this, is on rational basis test, what's the test?
Oh, I wish Pat were here, because he's just been all over that for the court cases, and I haven't.
It sounds like the steps toward the right to do this.
Yeah, it's a similar bar, but it, I think largely you have to go back to ninety-six telecommunications act.
And the federal policy magnates, because they want to expand so that we...
Thank you, I've neglected to say that. That really is the driving force, is allow these things to get out there, and, and I understand that.
And then you see conflict between how far the supremacy clause is going in that situation, where the county is going to, to determine this.
It's a balancing act.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I was just saying, I can see a clash between the fed and county on that, because the supremacy clause, unless it's fairly specific, it's, you can have a lot of gray area there, and, and it, it could sort of translate on the, on the county's right to make determinations.
Didn't the city just do that, come up on?
What's that?
Didn't the city just go through this, which was one of, on potluck, yes?
The county, yeah.
Um, yeah, that AT&T is the one we lost.
Was that on potluck?
Yes, yes. Um, I don't know what cities have gone through like that, I haven't seen anything.
Was that district court that?
Yes, sir.
You challenged it?
Yes, sir.
What was the ruling?
Oh, against us.
For what reason?
Oh, I, I don't know the details, we need Pat to weigh in on it. I just, I, I frankly could see this one coming, before the commissioners even made a decision, I was fairly certain they were going to rec, or they were going to deny it, and we were going to lose, because starting back with where you were, um, the feds have lined us up in a way to allow telecommunications towers to propagate, if that's the right word.
I can just see a lot of problems coming from that, but maybe...
Yeah, it, it's tricky, I mean, you can have regulations...
Preferential treatment to a certain industry for land use.
Yeah.
And, 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 yeah, anyway, it's problems.
It's frustrating. Um, but on the other hand, like, having had a uncle who was, uh, through the marriage, who taught at MIT as a physicist and knew about these things, Louis, Louis Branscombe. Louis assured me that there is no scientific data to show that a cell tower causes a harm from the radio frequency side of it, and that's been the case, that's why the ninety-six telecommunications act went through. Yeah, that, even today...
Is that the primary basis, though, for the county to deny?
No, actually, you could, you'd have a better argument on aesthetics. Um, because the safety argument's not going to win.
I can see all kinds of non-safety type arguments, I mean, you know, so, anyway.
Aesthetics has won in some court cases, um, safety in others, but mostly just being able to show that no, not here, there, if it's nearby. So if, if there are other options that are more secluded but still work as well, you can make these things happen.
It's interesting on the, the health issue, because I've actually seen a lot of scientific articles that say the opposite. So I guess it kind of depends on where you look, or what is maybe considered mainstream versus not mainstream, because I think there are valid arguments on both.
It's fair to say this has been argued for a quarter of a century, but I, I had certain, since Mr. Branscombe actually helped to invent the atomic bomb at Los Alamos, I felt secure in his knowledge.
Well, I did, I was reading through, thank you, one of them in here, and it actually talked about the electromagnetic influence, and that if it had a negative effect on something else, then it couldn't be located there, which in and of itself means it is giving something off and is causing a negative influence, but maybe it was being more, um, to a mechanical negative influence instead of more of a human.
Right.
But even in its own documentation, it talked about that there was a caveat there for the negative influence that this stuff could give off. So there's something there, it is doing something.
That's unarguable.
Yeah.
But where it's arguable is how it affects us.
Right.
And that's where it's nice when you can just point to other things and say, this creates this kind of problem, so we want it to avoid that.
Well, because it's in the code for the health, safety, and welfare.
Right, right.
So you, you know, if you, if you have to go with the code in health, safety, and welfare, but then you're putting something in that is negatively affecting the health, safety, and welfare, but if that's not arguable in court, then how do we...
Well, it, it's arguable, you just don't necessarily win.
It's arguable and winnable in court.
And the key word is general, generally, generally, they say the general health and welfare, general.
So general becomes subjective.
That's right.
It always has been, but that's been the case since nineteen twenty-three.
I'll say that again, please?
It's been the case since nineteen twenty-three, when that language first became, in the Hoover administration, promulgated throughout the United States.
So, so how does all this fit into what we're doing here?
Um, you're going to see a draft ordinance soon, that we will then, once you're comfortable with it, schedule a public hearing to see if we can include it into the land use development code.
Is it meant to balance the, the scope of the county's authority over this issue as opposed to the feds, or what? What's the point of the...
Meant to give us a better ability to say no when it's appropriate.
Yeah, because I see this more as a division of, I mean, speaking out of turn because I haven't viewed everything, but it sounds like it's a more division of powers, um, issue of how much power the fed should have over the county, and, and where that line is.
Well, I, if I could frame it differently, we as a county haven't captured as much power as we could.
Well, yeah, no, that's the, what I'm talking about, the line, you know, and, and I guess it depends philosophically where you are policy-wise on that side of the line. I tend to be more on the side of, the county's in a better position to determine what should go on in the county. When you talk about the, the general health and welfare, it depends on whose health and welfare you're talking about. If you're a guy, a person sitting in Maryland, you want as many cellphone tires here as possible, so when you go on vacation, you know, you, you always have coverage, you know? If you're in this county, you don't want that necessarily. So it really depends on whose point of view you're looking at, whether it's the feds or, or the county level. So, I mean, I'll just be upfront, my ilk would be to give the, the local government as much authority and power and expansive as possible.
I agree.
Yeah, I just think we're in a better position.
Just for my own sake, when I was reading through here, the line, the stuff that's being, um, stricken, uh, what is the difference between a public safety wireless communication facility and a wireless communication facility?
The wireless tend to be private for, eh, for profit, like AT&T, T-Mobile, what you get your service from.
And a public safety?
Tends to be fire, police, and, uh, other similar entities.
So when we're striking the, the words of public safety out of the code, how does that actually then changing then the code?
They're actually being put back in in other places. We're not, when, when you see the final version, wireless facilities will still be available and prevalent for public agencies.
Okay.
It's just that our code's complicated enough, you got to take it out of here and move it over there.
Yeah, I was doing a lot of...
To make, to make it work.
Yeah.
And that's why I need Pat on these things.
Do you know the name of the case where the, the court entered its ruling against the county? That would help me, because I, I could look at the...
I, it's easy to find, I'm sorry I don't, but I'll get it and email it out there.
Do you know who a party was? I can look it up.
Uh, AT&T.
If you can just send it to me, I, I can look it up.
Okay, it was AT&T.
Oh, it was AT&T, okay. The county versus, or AT&T versus the county?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
See what the ruling is.
And it didn't go beyond the district court, it didn't go up on appeal?
Not yet, uh...
Is the county going to appeal?
Not that I know of. I, Pat has actually recommended not to. Here's where I wish he were here, but...
Yeah, I mean, the reason, the reason I ask is...
Good reason for that.
The, the analysis should tell you what the standard is, what, what the test is for the county to be able to deny.
Right.
And it should be clearly in there, so, it's a quick way to find it.
Okay, if I can put my fingers on it, I'll just broadcast it to everyone. Um, but, uh, the other part of the answer to your question is, Pat didn't want to appeal it and said as much to, to the commissioners, because he didn't want to set that precedent.
That's the issue, yeah, yeah, because if you lose, then you, you set a precedent, but i- is it a first impression?
I don't know.
It sounds like it would be an issue of the federal law and what the threshold is for the county to be able to deny. And, and, and I mean that, where I start from is you have the rational basis test in, in governmental decisions, which is the lowest standard.
Right.
You, you, you know, even on appeal, if the appellate court can find some other rational basis that the decision maker didn't even consider, they look for that and they'll uphold the, the decision. This sounds like it's a little higher threshold, or maybe a lot higher, because it, it sounds like it's beyond rational basis.
I honestly don't know, but I'll see if I can find the actual decision and forward that to you. Does that give you enough for that item? Any other questions on cell tower amendment?
So we're just going to wait for the draft then on that?
Right, and that, that should be forthcoming. The, the reason I should backpedal here for a moment, the reason I'm not ready to go forward yet is, I, I got a little bit of the cart before the horse of putting this on the discussion for you all, because Pat wanted the county commissioners to give us the official okay to go forward. We got, we did that last, just a few days ago, and they didn't actually give us the official okay. They want Pat to work on it a little more, refine it, they wanted a dialogue about it, and then they'll circle back around and say, okay, we'll, we'll work on this. I, I know it's coming, it's just, I don't... Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Amending family and utility divisions of land.
The, this one and the next one you can think of, in my view, as being housekeeping measures, because on this first one, utility divisions of land and the family division, um, first of all, you should know, the first cut at this, it's in the code right now, was done on an emergency basis, and that's why it didn't come through you, because it was pretty simple, and it still is. Um, I'll see if I can actually find it in the ordinance, but it, it really comes down to one, one word change for utilities to make it clear that utility districts, um, don't have to have subdivisions, and so the reason it came up is the city of Cordillane had a little piece of land they wanted to do an expansion on for one of their, uh, water facilities, and it had never been through a subdivision process. I wanted to argue that it didn't need to be, because it, for crying out loud, is a public utility. And so, and that works just fine for public utilities, but when it's a private utility that does exactly the same thing, the code doesn't contemplate that, or didn't, now it does, and so we did that as an emergency ordinance. Similarly, when the commissioners approved the family exemption, we didn't clarify in that first round of regulations that the family exemption could also be done on subdivided land. And the commissioners wanted it to be available for subdivided land, so that was another of the two things that were done on an emergency basis. Since it's an emergency, it didn't have to go through you, but because it was an emergency, we had to circle back around and we did it on an interim basis, which is really just a, a stopgap or a finger in the dike, if you will, which gave us another year. And so now here I am, finally in front of you, doing it the usual customary way, where we talk about it, you, you have a chance to review the actual regs, then we schedule a hearing, then you recommend, then I go to the Board of County Commissioners, and then we do a final ordinance, and that makes it complete and once and for all. But I, I think the easy takeaway for you is that it's already in the ordinance, it's been in the ordinance for more than a year. I will tell you that these things are working well, and I'm hoping it's perfunctory when we have the public hearing for this one and the next one, because I don't think there are any real issues here. So with that, if I may, I'll just jump on to the next one, to the, oh, that, the first one I was talking about was zero, 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 five. The zero, 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 six is a similar situation in that it replaces an interim ordinance that we passed in October, and it, that ordinance expires this September, so this is just a way to try and get in front of it and do it in a customary way. Here, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, we're merely replacing what before this ordinance were requirements that you had to go to a highway district standard for roads. Instead of that, we allow under the current regs, fire district standards. There's a pretty dramatic difference between the two, especially when you add up the width and the depth of, of, uh, thank you. And then the highway district standard roads have two inches of asphalt on the top, and they're, they're twenty-two to twenty-eight feet wide, or a fire district road can be fourteen feet wide. You know, it's a significant cost difference for, in a minor subdivision, it can be a deal killer, because the cost is so much more, it just makes it impossible for the math to work. So I'm pleased with the changes that we've had in place, this would, again, like the last discussion we just had, continue to make it a permanent fixture in the code, whereas right now it's an interim.
It gives it direct or some authorities and stuff too.
I think actually, you may be remembering the one that just went to the county commissioners on my, on major subdivisions.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm talking about some of the other minor, minor issues.
Okay, but I, I...
You know, one of the things that's happened to me out there is in that ten acre lot, it's deep, it's eight hundred and something feet deep, and, uh, some of those people want to sell five acres of the ten acre.
Oh.
So I've got to try to figure out somehow to make sure that they understand that they need to have a private road across the first five acres that will access the, the deeper five acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and I think you've got it covered.
I, I, under the current regs, they have to meet fire district standards at least.
So, you know, some of the people out there have got a ten acre lot, and they hail you on, on part of it, but they... but they're, they're gonna maintain ownership of the whole ten acres with one family or one group.
Right.
But some of them are trying to subdivide the ten acre lots and change their flat subdivision tonight. Not that, I'm trying to deal with that.
Well, at least there it would require a minor subdivision. And you'd get to refer, review it as, as a referral agency, since you're on the HFA.
But they'll have to replat the whole subdivision if they do the-
Yeah. Yeah, minor subdivisions are expensive endeavors. By the time you pay to your surveyor and get through the process, you're looking at fifteen, twenty thousand dollars.
Properties to build their own well, I mean, the NAU a little expensive.
Those twenty thousand dollar drills?
Thirty-one thousand for the first one.
Wow.
Of course, the four hundred feet deep one.
Oh, okay. That explains it.
What is this, the road ordinance do with the serial minor subdivisions? Because that was one of the major issues when we first started this iteration, and we've not circled back to that. Does this touch base on that? Is this going to-
We need to, no, this doesn't fix that at all. This is just- This is the sort of thing that gets in the way of the bigger picture.
This does.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, that's why I'm bringing it up.
We still need to deal with that.
Right.
And Pat knows that.
Okay.
I think my frustration is, I don't mind saying, since I'm near retirement.
Cash your last check.
Say again. What's that?
He said he says he's near retirement.
I'm aiming for retiring in January.
You're trying to retire before that issue gets resolved?
No, I'm not. I'm trying to get it done, but I, part of my frustration is I got one attorney to do all these things.
Well, how Pat would that, you know, I, I, that's an issue I, I'd like to deal with, yeah.
What else you string with?
Need to resolve it.
So, that's something we do need to come back to.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and we actually, the staff has some ideas that I think would help. When Ben's back, we can trot them out again. I, I think what we've done in these last couple of things is my staff, Ben and others, have actually done the draft work. Pat just looks it over and say, yeah, that's good, let's go forward. So, that saves some time.
And move things faster.
That's helped a lot. And I think we can do that with the minor serial aspect.
How much of that is still occurring? The serial minors? It's still going on?
It's not as bad. I can't explain why.
Because we're putting a light on it?
Well, I, for whatever reasons, we had a barn door sort of
Yeah.
event where everyone just took advantage of it for about a year. And we blew through hundreds of them. But because we blew through hundreds of them, I think we sort of exhausted the, the supply momentarily. But it's still a worry to me.
It's still there, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Because it's the sort of thing that ought to be fixed.
I agree.
So, it's still high on my priority list. I think as soon as Ben's back from vacation, I'm reminding my, we need to make this a priority.
So, theoretically, if we move ahead with approval of this, and then we circle back to the serial miners, we can still come back and change this, correct?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Okay.
You need to think of the development code as being amendable in every way. It's just a matter of when things change.
And this, this is-
And there are changed conditions, we can revisit the code.
And we're doing this because this was an interim, and it just needs to be taken care of, because that interim time period isn't done.
It fixes the problem for now.
Pin in it, and that pin is-
But we need to actually come back and rebuild the dike.
Gotcha. Okay.
If you'll pardon the metaphor.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Sure. So, that's all I have, unless you have questions?
Any announcements? But I guess we are adjourned after we go to it.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks for helping me with that question.
Sure.